Welcome to the April 17th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. If you'd please stand and join me in the pleasure of the flag.
I'd like to lead it through the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown online and on local access television. First, we have a hearing for renewal of the cable television license with Comcast. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of West Bridgewater as the Cable Television Licensing Authority will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the West Bridgewater Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater pursuant to Chapter 207, 3.05, and any applicable cable television renewal license laws, regulations, or requirements regarding the renewal of the cable television license of the Comcast Cable Communications Incorporated. Any applications, reports, statements, and/or amendments in the possession of the town to be considered at the hearings shall be available for public inspection and reproduction at a reasonable fee at the Board of Selectmen's office during regular Town Hall hours. Okay, is there a motion to open the hearing?
We're going to open a public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. David, is our counsel here?
He is not.
Okay.
He should be here right now.
David, did you want to do a quick overview, or did you want to wait until he gets here?
Um, if I'm just okay with you, if you can wait just a few minutes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. We'll come back to it. Okay, so the first business on the regular agenda is to reorganize the board after the last election. So is there a motion to appoint a chairman?
I'll make a motion to appoint Eldon the chairman.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to thank you for a great, great year that we had with you, and we accomplished a lot of things. And thank you very, very much, and we have all the time with you.
Thank you, Eldon. Appreciate it. Okay, and is there a motion for a vice chair?
Denise, raise vice chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And for clerk?
Motion for Anthony to be the clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney Solomon is here now, so if you would like to go back to the area.
Okay.
So, as you know, is that we're, our 10-year contract with Comcast is going to expire at the end of June. About two years ago or so, the board voted to hire special counsel, which is William Solomon, who specializes in this field. He has worked diligently over the past year, year and a half, with Comcast, with Ben from the Cable Advisory Committee, and also myself. Kathy is here from Comcast as well, so she can answer any questions. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to answer or ask any questions pertaining to the contract. Most of it stays the same. There are some changes, but for the most part, it's the same thing here will be, this contract versus the previous one. Mr. Solomon has provided a three-page summary for your review, so that way you could see what the highlights and the differences are. I'm going to ask that the board is not going to, I'm going to ask the board not to take a vote tonight because the cable committee still has not taken its vote. It would only be appropriate for you to take a vote afterwards. So tonight, because it's already been posted as a public hearing, and it comes with the law, is that to do your due diligence in asking the questions that you need to ask. And then at the very end, I will ask you to continue it to a certain date in the future, and we'll address that at the very end. So with that said, I don't know if you want to turn over to Attorney Solomon?
Yeah. Attorney Solomon, would you like to just give a three-minute quick overview?
Sure. Where should I? Here. You'll move them up to the floor. I can stand if you'd like. Ben? Thank you. It's good to be here, Attorney William Solomon. I handled, together with the town, the last Comcast for Noah license, which is brought the town forward with an excellent PEG access. PEG, as you know, is Public Educational and Government Access, Community Television. Ben, I can say his team, but mostly Ben, does a fabulous job in running that for the town. So, I also want to thank Dave. It's not every town. The town administrator plays such an active role in a cable license, and he's been great in overseeing and making sure at the end that the town needs from that, so I appreciate that. So, the license going forward is an excellent one. It's going to put the town in a good position going forward in a world that's somewhat uncertain with respect to cable, because there are competitors. Comcast is an excellent cable company. They like being a cable company. They do a good job of being a cable company, as cable companies go, and therefore their subscriber numbers in West Bridgewater are strong. In fact, I think this past year, they might even gone up a few, but very close. So that said, let me go over the terms of the proposed license. It's a 10-year license. That's the longest term allowed under state law. I believe strongly that 10-year license is the interest of both parties. It saves the parties from having to negotiate and have expenses through multiple renewals for shorter terms, and it provides certainty, investment certainty, expectation certainty for both parties, particularly for the town and for the PEG access program. Comcast is also a technologically advanced company, and it's not as if, under federal laws, the town is going to gain any greater authority going forward with respect to technology, so that I'm not concerned that in a 10-year license, the town will lose an opportunity to obtain better technology. I think, together with this license and the fact that Comcast is the cutting edge of cable technology, I think the town's going to be in a good position. At the same time, the dollars that are coming in will be more certain by having a license that's a 10-year license. In fact, on the second bullet of the summary, the subscriber number went up three this past year. That's great for both parties. The availability of service. I put this down in all cable summaries, but I thought it was interesting, because I just happened to look, as Ben and I were discussing, the nature of things that are in this license and that are not necessarily in every license. And I took a look, and I saw that last time, we were able to achieve a requirement that cable service, which would also mean by implication, internet service, be available to all subscribers in town. I took a look at Bridgewater and East Bridgewater, and they have density requirements, which are not uncommon in areas outside of more dense areas. And their requirements would be that there be 30 homes per mile if perchance there are new homes built, and they would require 30 homes under the license, unless Comcast wanted to do better, to build out if the area is served by aerial wires. If the area was served by underground wires, it would require 60 homes per mile, which is an awful lot of homes for an area. Here in West Bridgewater, under the existing license and this license, it's, there's no density requirement. The company has agreed to build out if there's new homes. And generally speaking, they want to, but we have some certainty going forward, and I think that's, that's great. Standard installation, that's what a drop, what a standard installation drop would be a drop from the street to the house. How much, this is a standard price, doesn't cost extra. That's 125 feet, consistent with a federal regulation that's used in other contexts, and that's acceptable. Importantly, PEG access annual support. Under the current license, the support that comes in quarterly, calculated on an annual basis, calculate on a quarterly basis, I guess based on subscribers, that will be going forward 5% of Comcast gross annual revenues. As with the current license, the definition of gross annual revenues is a broad definition. There's no exclusion from that category. And so going forward, that payment for community television will be 5% of those revenues. Under the current license, it varies between 3.5% and 4.5%. So on average, that is going up 1% of gross revenues under the current license. That's the maximum allowed under federal law, and it provides funding for the town to meet its needs going forward. PEG capital, the PEG capital funding will be $125,000. That'll be upfront. Now, both of these financial support numbers, the 5% and the $125,000, are solid numbers. And the reason the town was able to achieve that are two. One is the track record of what West Bridgewater has done with its community programming to date, and showing where the town needs to go and wants to go, what its needs and interests are for the next 10 years. And frankly, the fact that Comcast takes seriously community programming. It makes its programming and its service a stronger service in competition with others. And so I think because of that, and frankly because the town is fortunate to have an experienced government affairs representative manager from Comcast, who used to be in the business for Comcast of producing and managing PEG access, because Ms. Maloney was your government affairs rep, she was able to communicate and listen and take that message back to Comcast, still allowed the town to achieve what I think is an excellent license financially. Trying to move it along. Going forward, you now have two PEG access channels. You have the right to a third channel. That sometimes is needed if there's a lot of programming during the peak hours of watching, if there's more government programming, and I know there's the interest in more government programming, more educational programming, more community programming, that if that program is such that the Access Corp feels that there's a need to have another channel for, because of those peak hours particularly, the town has the right to another channel with 120 days' notice. Very importantly, the big issue for 10 years, almost 10 years in community programming is high definition. As you probably know better than I, most channels of cable video are high definition. That has not occurred to date, up until recently, in cable. To Comcast credit, after looking at that issue for a long time, they have now started to offer one high-definition channel for community programming. That's a great step forward. It's appreciated. We negotiated long and, in a challenging but productive way, what the terms of that would be. It's in the license. There's a, there's a cost of $15,000, I believe, if I'm remembering right, I'll take a look, for that. But that'll provide an additional channel, and a channel that you can select among your three, or another channel that'll have an even higher quality of picture.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have a couple of other appointments coming in, so I'm going to apologize if you abbreviate.
Sure. I will. Thank you very much. And going forward also, your Town Hall will be connected to the high school, middle school, so you can go live from the Town Hall. That'll be done by fiver. Ms. Maloney was able to speak to Comcast, and we reached an agreement on that. So, finally, there's a senior discount. There is currently a senior discount. There'll continue to be a senior discount. It's the standard discount that's provided by Comcast. You know, it's not going to take, it takes, it's not a lot of money, but it's something. And importantly, and this, we appreciate the cooperation of Ms. Maloney, that the financial qualifications for that include a broader range that allow your residents to, for instance, who have fuel assistance or might have tax abatements under state law, they get from the town, allow those residents also to qualify for the senior discount. So in sum, it's an excellent license. You'll be here again, considering and voting. I, as your counsel, highly recommend the license. If you have any questions going forward, please, through your town administrator, just let me know, and thank you again for the opportunity to work with the town.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple. How many subscribers do we have in West Bridgewater?
Sure. So you, it said you went up three this year. Not every place went up. And that's, so 2,516.
Okay. And the other question I have is, cable committee here, what do they think about this?
Unfortunately, the cable committee is not here right now.
Is there anybody can speak in behalf of? Oh, you speak.
On their behalf. They do, they have senior license. They do, for the most part, agree with it. They like it. We unfortunately just couldn't get a meeting together. We planned to have a meeting Tuesday night. Unfortunately, two members couldn't attend, and we wanted the full board approval. And I think another board member was having trouble getting that night off as well.
But they have been involved throughout and have been supportive of everything to date, so I, I'd be, I think there's only one final issue that I think they'll address related to the high definition, but to date, that, based on my view, that means that they've been fully supported.
What do you feel is the biggest change in this contract?
You know, the increase in financial support, both the operating support to 5% and the $125,000 upfront that'll allow the town to make immediate investments, the Access Corp make immediate investments to improve the cable television programming. Let me just say one last thing. I'll be 10 seconds, 20 seconds. You know, working across the state, what I see is, show me a community that has good community television, that has sports, which I've always loved the games back here when I come to Town Hall, has artistic events, cultural events, has religious events, has government meetings. Show me those towns that have that community television. And what I find are towns that have a good local economy, where people, in a world where it's hard to work together, work together to common causes. And I think West Bridgewater stands out in a region that has pretty good access, but, you know, not always, not always necessarily what you can have in some other areas where it's been a while longer. West Bridgewater's program, I think, reflects the community that I see when I come here and look around at how much is going on and how much, how many people are involved. And so I think that extra funding will allow the town to connect further with residents, residents with the town, residents with community groups. Community groups get more participants, and I think it'll be invaluable in strengthening community bonds, local economy, in a sense of spirit. I think this license will allow for the next 10 years, where there will be some choppy seas, but not so far in West Bridgewater, and I think you're going to stay stable on cable subscribers. It'll allow you to continue building your community, which you should be proud of, because there's a lot going on in West Bridgewater, and that's because of the work of the board and the residents and the volunteers, and this will allow those people, in a world where there's not as many local news sources, sometimes not a local newspaper, this will allow access to fill that gap and to continue to allow you to grow to be the community you want to be.
Honestly, I'd like to thank David. He put a lot of time into this. I know he puts a lot of effort into these things.
He did.
But you and you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Denise?
Just one quick question. The price sheet for the bundle packages, that shows it's for Avon, East Bridgewater, Hanson, Sharon, and West Bridgewater. So is this license contingent on all of these towns signing on to this, or is this just to illustrate the prices that's part of our contract?
I'm not sure what...
So, on...
Oh, okay, yes. That's just for general information purposes, but no, this is a license that's reflective of its municipality.
Okay, but these are the prices for all of those communities?
Yeah, that is true.
Okay.
If there's any uniqueness, you'd see it noted.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Maloney, did you have anything to add?
No, other than, I feel like you said it all.
Okay.
It's been a pleasure working with your representatives. I've had a long history in this area and this town, too. Been a while, but I enjoy very much working with the group you've chosen to negotiate. And I'm really here as, this is your ascertainment hearing, so if there's other public comment, I'm really just here to listen.
Okay.
And I'll provide you with my business card if you don't have it already. I know David does. If there's a constituent concern of things outside of this license, tell me your person if you need to reach out to someone at Comcast.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay. Is there a motion to continue the hearing to, when is the date, David?
Yeah, I would ask you to continue to May 15th at 7:00 PM.
Make a motion to continue the hearing to May 15th at 7:00 PM.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have to assign the selectmen roles. We have the surges signatory, the parking clerk, and the road opening permit. Does anyone have any preference?
Well, I'll be the parking clerk again.
I'll continue to be a road opening, then I'll sit down.
Okay. All that will do is surges. Is there a motion to appoint Eldon as the road opening signatory, Denise as the parking clerk, and myself as the surges signatory?
Make a motion to appoint Anthony as the surges signatory, Eldon as the road opening permit application signatory, and I will be the parking clerk.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have discussion on accepting Pearl Road as a town road. David, did you want to briefly say, tell us why we're here, and then the residents will be able to speak?
Sure. So Pearl Road was permitted a handful of years ago through the Planning Board as a traditional subdivision. It started off as a private subdivision based on the fact that it was going to have a shared septic system. It has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds as a private division as well, and therefore the road remains a private road. However, there has been conversations between some of the residents and Hugh Hurley, chairman of the Planning Board, and they are petitioning to have the road be accepted as a public road. Roads can only be accepted as a public road at Town Meeting. It can only be placed on the warrant by the Board of Selectmen. There are some concerns with it becoming a public road, because when the development was built and originally envisioned, it was going to remain private. So John Delano Conservation Agent and Hugh Hurley, again, chairman of the Planning Board, they have met with Mr. Howard, and my understanding is, is that the HOA that is in existence for Pearl Road is going to accept some responsibility for the sewer lines and for repairs and maintenance to the road associated with that. It has to be drawn up. Our legal counsel's working on the paperwork, and I'm sure their HOA is to refer to it as well. But assuming that we have that agreement, so that way they take on that responsibility, we would be recommending to the board that it become a public way. And I know Mr. Howard is here to speak. John is here to speak as well. On, if you have any other questions.
Okay. Well, if you'd like to, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you for allowing us to speak and petition to possibly take over the road. Everything he said is what we would like. We'd like to pretty much just be, have access, as every other street in West Bridgewater is, to the town snowplow. It is, there are public facilities down at the end of the road. It is used by the school buses, and we would like to. I think that we've talked to the Planning Board about this. They've reviewed the road. We've actually walked up and down the road. It has been built to per the specs, and the changes haven't made per the Planning Board's recommendations. In fact, the Planning Board wrote a letter recommending that they do, in fact, think that the road should be taken over.
John, did you have anything to add?
I think David summarized pretty much everything that Mr. Hurley and I spoke with Mr. Howard about, so at this point, unless you have questions, I can answer them, but I think I'm satisfied.
Okay. Thanks, John. Denise, Eldon, any questions? Comments?
So, just a few questions about some issues we've run into the past with accepting private roads. I just want to clarify that everything is up to code of a public road. So paving, asphalt, septic, that we might need to get to, sidewalks, street lighting. Is there any special street lighting that was installed for this road that's uncommon from other roads, public roads?
There's street lighting on every single property that's set to a, on a lamp, on a dimmer, on each individual property. There's no above lamps.
Okay.
Ahead of that. But the road was built wide enough. In fact, it's, I would say it's one of the most private, any sort of private ways. That's part of, like I said, we have walked up and down it with the Planning Board, and they have made suggestions, and they all have been met.
Okay. So that lighting you were talking about, that special lighting, is that billed to the resident, or is that billed to the HOA?
Billed to the residents.
Billed to the residents?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. John, you found everything is?
That's correct. In our meeting that we had, I had a similar question to Mr. Hurley, and he indicated that they were satisfied with the construction standards and that it, in every way, met what a regular road would be in town.
Now, what type of rights do you lose going from a private road to a public road, as far as the public coming down your road?
Well, it's a dead end. I'm not sure if you've been down there. It abuts, it, you know, private land, it's zoned, and it's also protected land. So it's not, as far as being a public access way, I don't envision that ever happening.
Because we get solicitations door-to-door sometimes, at home, so I'm presuming that's going to open you up to that versus the privacy you've enjoyed up until then.
I believe that's a...
Okay. Okay. I think that's, you know, as far as, you know, and I'll say this, and it's going to sound terrible, I'm going to try to make it sound better than it sounds, but I can tell you, my road hasn't been done over in, I don't know when. It's full of little squiggly black lines where they come in and fill in the crevices as they go. So our town does the very best efficiently and effectively to maintain roads. I just, I'm sure your road looks beautiful. It's new. I just want to, ahead of time, it may not be maintained as nicely as your HOA intended to. I think that's fair to tell you upfront.
I think that's understood and accepted. I mean, we realize that, you know, that you were giving up maybe a manicured road to have, you know, access, and I think that's the main thing that we're concerned about, is access and having it cleared on a regular basis, so that you can get up and down safely.
Okay.
Eldon?
Yeah, being on this board for a couple of years here, I've seen roads of kind of a disaster, you know, and the way they're put in. And of course, I don't know if the town was there when you were putting the roads in, and is Highway Superintendent been involved in this at all?
I mean, I've mentioned this to the Highway Department, and from my perspective, I don't, I have not heard of any objections to it. I know that they have equipment out there, that it's, you know, they're out there, it's not, you know, out of the way, if that answers your question, but nothing...
Is there an engineer from the town or anything looking at this thing over? I, you know, I'd like to tell you, you know, over the years, we've had nothing but trouble with roads that are, you know, the road is just as good as the foundation has underneath it. And this is what we run into. We ran it out on Miami Street, and finally got them to dig it out and do it right, because it, a lot of West Bridgewater is wet, and we have quite a problem with that. I just don't want to, you know, vote for this, and all of a sudden, the road starts breaking up. Because I have no idea what's underneath that road, you know? And I don't know, like I said, I'm not saying that you didn't do a good job, or you did to it, but there was, other than the Planning Board, I don't even know if they were present when all this thing was going on. There's where I have a problem.
So the normal course of action is, is that it's permanent through the Planning Board. As you know, the town, being a small town, doesn't have funds for a private engineer. So the Planning Board then charges the developer for a peer review, so we get to hire an engineer, and the engineer, then in theory, then he or she oversees the project. They do put their stamp to it, so they are saying that they're, it does meet the specs. So with the best of our ability, based on what we're told, it would meet all the normal specs. Now, I will say this in advance, because this is no secret, is that when the developer went in there, it was always envisioned to be a private road. When that does occur, there is not as much oversight by the regulatory authorities, because everybody knows that you're doing it at that risk. With that said, the engineer still stamps it, the engineer still has to be there, and they have to do their due diligence, or else they risk losing their license. So we put a little extra onus on that engineer to provide us the information, so trusting the information they gave us, I would presume that the road is just as good as any other new road.
And I can also attest, and I know, because the Planning Board has gone down multiple times, both that I've been there and before, when I was a resident there, and they're having mona vacations, just... having modifications, just recently, raising the manhole covers to make sure that they are level, to not interfere with the snowplows. They have, they've modified some of the areas right around where the driveways are to make sure that they're in compliance. So there have been modifications to the planning board's specs to ensure that things are up to snuff.
I'm on the Mass Highway Board, and everything that's, all the way down to Plummer has my signature, okay? And I've even criticized them out there on Route 24. Well, every year they go the same thing. They patch the road, next year they're doing the same patch again. But sometimes, I'd rather have them do little and do it right. And, because I've seen, I've seen this happen, though. And, you know, I argue with them all the time about it, and I do, see, we sit behind it. If I can make that little difference there, I'm happy being here, okay? But I just hope that, you know, you did a good job as far as your foundation goes, because that's just, and I plan to vote for it. But I would say, I'm very concerned about when we have to take over a road like that.
I understand your concerns on that, and I think that, you know, we have, there's been, you know, due diligence done on both the homeowners and the town side.
Now, we do have problems. You willing to fix it?
Well, I mean, as far as the construction and the maintenance of the road, there's my understanding that the town would take, you know, along with the snowplow responsibilities, take responsibilities for that. We will be taking these ones, so for any drainage issues, for, whereas it pertains to the grates, as well as the septic, the shared septic in at the end. But that, it was explained to me, and I think that, you know, the planning board had stamped their approval based on that they would, the town would take maintenance of the road as well as...
I have another question.
Do we have, sorry, do we have an agreement yet with the HOA?
No, that's in the process. This, this, I mean, if it's fair to say, this agreement...
Yes.
Is relatively new.
Yes.
So, but it is in our town council's hands. They are working on creating an agreement. The goal of this point would be this, in a couple of weeks, you're going to be voting, because there's not going to be a vote tonight, is that you'll be voting and placing all the warrant articles on the warrant. So we have at least a couple of weeks to start drafting it, and then I want to have everything in place and signed by all parties before town meeting. I will say this, if it's not signed at town meeting by town meeting, which is June 3rd, then I would have to recommend a town meeting. You can't approve it, because you don't know what you're actually agreeing to. But it should be agreed by June 3rd, I would assume.
And David, did you say there was a public hearing at the planning board level?
Yes, so the planning board is going to be required, they've already sent over a memo, but they could have an additional public hearing on it, because that's a requirement of the law. They'll have a public hearing, and then they will also, at that point, they will be endorsing, I presume, an article to the Board of Selectmen to place at town meeting.
Okay, all right, I think we're all set. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, John.
You too.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, Boston Post cane display. So if you guys noticed, we have a new display in the back of the room that Southeastern Regional was gracious to build for us. It's the, is it the original cane, David, or is it a replica?
It's the original one.
The original cane? So...
No, it was found. Yes, it was.
It was lost and found.
Lost and then found.
So then below, there are some nameplates with those who have been honored with the cane.
I think they did an excellent job there, and we really appreciate what they did. I know you had Southeastern budget, and that night, I don't know what we were doing here, but we, they should have been thanked. I'd like to send a letter over there and thank them for, that's a great thing that they did there, and we thank them very much.
Yeah, they did a great job creating it for us, because they didn't charge us, and Mike White, the building inspector, hung it for us and no charges.
And I'd like to send a letter with thanks, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Vote on site plan review, special permit planning board, a contractor's yard to be located at 373 Crescent Street. Does anyone have any comments or items to discuss on this? How much to be sent to the planning board?
My only question would be, how close is this to residence?
Oh, very close.
Very close.
No, it's, it looks more like a residential area than it does a commercial area. It's, let's see, we can, that's not a very good map.
There's housing on either side of it, it looks like.
There is.
All sides.
This is in a long-term, pre-existing commercials facility. It's where Universal used to be, that always stored large trucks. And so, quite frankly, this person has bought the property. He's done a very nice job. If you go by there, you'll see that it looked really bad for him. He's done a nice job cleaning it up, but it's definitely right in the middle of the residential area.
What type of contractor's yard does he intend this to be? Is it going to be construction material like wood and steel, or is it going to be rocks and gravel?
Or radioactive material.
We've had that. I know it sounds funny, but it's managed to find its way here.
So we don't know at this point what he's going to do. He's proposing, he's got a couple of buildings there, that my understanding is, is that he is one going to make some modifications to. He's going to join two buildings. You can see on the bottom that he's got a little jog there, so he's going to join two buildings, and then a new building is going to be built as well. When you have a contractor's yard, what they typically do is, is they build these buildings and then advertise it. And the hope is, is that you then rent it out, whether it's electricians, or carpenters, or, you know, fuel trucks, anybody that needs space. So those, he's going to be, that building up on the top, my understanding is that's going to be a garage, it's called a house, a half a dozen to maybe 20 vehicles, and then the rest of the yard would be able to store material. So we don't know, because he hasn't contracted with those vendors yet.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors, any of the residents?
I have not, but the planning board will be holding a public hearing on this. We just send comments to the planning board, and so the developer is going to be required by law to send out an abutters notification list, and then they would go to the planning board, voice their concerns, and the planning board will then permit it or not permit it according.
Do you happen to know what the zoning is on West Street where those houses are? Are those houses in commercial zone?
I didn't look at that. Based on where it is, my guess is, is that that is a residential zoned area, and it is a pre-existing industrial, commercial area, because that facility has been a commercial entity for a very, very long time. Probably zoning came in in the 60s. I'm, I'm willing to venture a guess, it's probably pre-existent zoning.
It's grandfathered.
Oh, sure.
The only comment I'd have is noise to the planning board to consider, noise because of the close neighbors. Eldon, do you have any comments?
I'm both the same thing, is, you know, the traffic. I like what he's done, you know, he cleaned it up quite a bit, and, you know, put me eye on it, and, and maybe, but really, really don't know what's going to go in there. That's another thing, you know, and that's kind of the unknown. But it is a commercial area there, but it's attached with a residential too, and it's, so we just hope that takes that into consideration.
I would say...
Whoever they get in there.
I would say noise as well, and hours of access.
I bought the lighting of the road and everything else, has that all been taken into consideration? I mean, I suppose we'll have to wait to see what's going in there.
Yeah, I mean, again, they've just filed the application at this point.
Yeah.
So the planning board will require them to do all of that due diligence and get those questions answered.
Yeah, I would say hours of access, David, where he's going to be renting out some of those bays. I, I don't know what time those folks would be coming in and out. I don't know if there's generally restrictions when you have that type of use in the ordering residential?
So why don't we just, we'll forward off the comments. Let's, let's expand it to say that the planning board be sensitive to hours of operation for both construction and after construction.
That's right. Okay, is there a motion to send along the, to the planning board?
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, antique and secondhand license renewals. Lorna has put together a list for us, so we have the renewal of Lamplight Shop. It's a yard sale, one horse, shan, antiques, attic treasures, and eclectic collection. Is there a motion to approve those renewals?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Arbor Day, and we have an annual proclamation for Arbor Day, which is April 26th. Is there a motion to, to issue that proclamation?
Motion to issue the proclamation for Arbor Day.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the vote on FY '20 budget, is there a motion? Just kidding.
Oh, okay.
David, did you want to run us through the recommendations that you have made first, and then we can discuss them, or we'll discuss them as we go along down the list?
So you'll see in your packet, I provide an executive summary. The presented budget, I'm using a rate of two and a half percent. The Board of Selectmen requested everybody to provide a level funded budget. Out of all the budgets that we received, only three did not do that. One was the assessors looking to convert a part-time person to a full-time person, the police department looking to add an additional officer, and the DPW department, they didn't really necessarily request a GIS person. We have felt at the board level and at other levels that a GIS person is needed, and that would be the appropriate place to house them, at least in the short term. So with that said, everybody else did keep it at a level funded budget. The operational budget, which includes all departments, including water, will be up, my recommendation, is at 4.19 percent, year over year, about $1.4 million. That means that that is water rates and tax side. The major drivers, or apparently divers, of our budget is, is those there for the $500,000 in our local school, a couple hundred thousand dollars between benefits and police, and $137,000 in the water. The water doesn't hit the tax rate, that's based on water rates. Operational budget, if you exclude water, which is what we oversee directly, is up just a tad over 4 percent, or just under $1.3 million. I will tell you that when you consider, there are a lot of things outside of our control, namely benefits, retirement, health insurance, some of the costs that the schools incur. I honestly believe that in today's day and age, where you try to make sure that you provide services as a full-service community, we've done a pretty good job to keep it at 4 percent year over year. The presented budget funds all contractual raises for unions and non-unions. It does not rely on one-time free cash transfers. It does, in my recommended budget, I am recommending that we fund for an additional police officer and for the GIS person. The finance committee reserve, I am fully funding at FY '19 levels, so that way if we do run into an issue next year, we have the available resources. I've been conservative with our revenue numbers, so therefore we don't run into a problem or an issue. And again, it'll be the sixth year that I've built the budget, that we will be able to transfer $350,000 to offset the budget for the debt for the middle school, high school.
Okay. Thank you, David. So Eldon or Denise, did you have any questions? I mean, we've, David presented us with a balanced budget. We have the option of passing this budget along to the finance committee. We do have the option of making additional changes.
I do have recommendations for additional changes.
And, I'm so sorry, just so that way people watching us know, the budget that I'm recommending is not all the requests from the departments you'll see on this sheet here, that in order to get there, I was, I am recommending $183,000 in cuts. So I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
Thanks, David.
Do you want me to go down the lines individually?
Sure.
Okay. So, starting with line 1410, David recommended a reduction of 16572. I'm recommending to increase that to 18572, and that was based on an additional $2,000 from line 5300.
Which is...
I'm going to have to go have this book flipping. So line 5300 was engineering services, and when I looked at that year over year, the actual was 3,500 one year, 2,500 the next, 6,500 seemed to be a beefed up number, so I went with 4,500. That's still an additional $1,000 over historical FY '17.
Didn't that, the 16,000 includes 1,500 in reduction, right? Something like that?
Oh, did you include that in the 16,5, David?
I did, so it should be, oh, you know what? Put the one liners in here. Keep on going.
I know you, I thought you had reduced it by the...
May I do this? May I go and get that out of the sheet? Because that will show the individual lines that it came from.
Okay.
Because that is the, I cut that line, I think it was by 2,000 or 1,000.
Oh, you already did? Okay.
Let me grab that.
Trying to pull it up. No service.
You signed on to the town's internet?
No, I don't have the Wi-Fi connected to this, no. I guess we can skip down to the minutes while we're waiting for David. So the meeting minutes of March 20th, 2019, is there a motion to approve those?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Except for review of the meeting minutes of April 3rd?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to release the executive session minutes of February 6th?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So 2,000, exactly what?
Yep, there it is.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all set.
Okay.
Now, I went down to line, I'm sorry, budget 1940?
Town hall?
And I was recommending a $4,200 reduction for electric and telephone, just looking at the historical, seems sort of high. So 4,200 there. And I'll just go down the line and do all of them if you like, or do you want to look at them individually?
Let's look at them individually.
Okay.
David, are you able to speak to telephone or electricity for town hall?
That's for the entire town hall, but if I'm doing the math correctly, 10,2 minus 42, and it would be 6,000, and they routinely spend 7,500.
So it was actually two lines, telephone and electric?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so electric. So between the two lines, you're saying 4,200.
Does that look feasible?
Do you have any idea if the telephone contract has changed over the past year?
No, I do not. I mean, the telephone contract looks to be fairly stable. I mean, the telephone contract looks to be fairly stable. The electricity is obviously a lot more variable.
So maybe just to be on the side of caution, go with, um, a $2,000 reduction?
You mean combined?
Really?
Yes. Yep.
I have no issue with that.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with it.
So reduce that line, that budget by 2,000?
Say 1,000 per.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Line 2100, I'm not recommending we add another police officer at this time. So that would be a reduction of approximately 60,000, I believe. We were looking for a level services budget, and based on what was presented, I, I'm not seeing the need this year to add another police officer.
I think the conversation with the, with the chief, uh, he's pretty busy over there, and of course, that, that terrain up here on 106, uh, he's already down one, uh, I think one police officer anyhow. And I think, uh, what I see over there, he justified in asking for that increase, and I plan to vote for the increase.
I, I don't think he's down, Eldon, I think, David, you said that position was backfilled?
He's down only because that person hasn't been hired yet, but the position and funding still exists. So he's down because the new person hasn't been backfilled after the school resource officer move over.
So this is truly an additional position?
It is an additional position, yes. I think that it's been a long time since this department's seen an increase. So, right now, or on pretty much any given night, there's three full-time officers working, one in the station, and there's only two on the road. I think that's pretty low. I mean, yeah, we're a small town, but calls are up. I, I know Vic gave us some stats last time, and although I'm sure a lot of those calls might be petty, or, or not all that serious, there's potential that while they're on that call, something else might happen on a different side of town. I think it's in the nature of people to call the police far more frequently now for things that they never would have in, I don't know, 20 years ago? Or 1997, when the last officer, um, when there was the last increase to the department? I just, I think that two officers on the road is pretty low. And maybe we have a bigger, um, police department than other towns, um, our size, but we are pretty busy, we're next to a major city, have a major roadway going through the town 106, and then a highway, Route 24, going through. I, I just think that it is time, and with two officers on the road, there could be potential for, um, not enough staffing if, if there is a major incident.
Would we still have two on the road even with the dispatch person we hired?
Yes, kind of. So, um, there's, because of the union agreement, the dispatcher cannot replace, um, an officer. So that officer is still stationed to the house, although if they choose, there, they can go out, um, on the road. And in the case of an emergency, yeah, it would be expected that they, they leave the station and leave just the dispatcher in the station. But, um, because of the union agreement, um, there may only be two on the street. And the dispatch, there isn't always a dispatcher there. Um, it's, I don't know how, exactly how many hours a week, I forget the number, but, um, it's not 24/7 that there's a, an additional dispatcher there.
Yeah, well, I thought, I thought the dispatcher was there 24/7.
We'd have to negotiate that out of the union agreement, right, David? In order to get, um, civilian dispatchers?
Right, so, you know, it's a couple of things, we only have funding. What we do is, we've brought in people for under $20 an hour that want to eventually become police officers to be dispatchers. But they're not fully trained, because they're not full-fledged dispatchers. So that's one reason we need a police officer there at times to be able to coach them along. But yes, in addition to that, the union agreement allows them to be able to dispatch, and we can't force them to leave the dispatcher to go out onto the road. That part would have to be, be changed. And we don't have enough funding to have a dispatcher on 24/7. We have funding, I think Vic, the police chief, has done a very, very good job of being able, we do sour cost to still have dispatching and try to get that third person out on the road. But I do think that the chairman is correct, that regardless if we have two people or three people on a busy day, especially during the summer, on a weekend, we get busy, and I would want to make sure from a level of safety that that police officer hopefully would have somebody else to be able to call for backup.
I think in a way, it's a long one too, as far as the overtime too, because he has that one available that he can push. I mean, there's all kinds of situations he runs into.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's not really an extra man or they, be, because I think he, he could be utilized a lot better.
So right now, Friday and Saturday nights, Vic pays overtime frequently, because he does, um, always have four men on Friday and Saturdays nights.
So he, that's a good point Eldon made about reducing the overtime by hiring someone.
We do have a mutual aid agreement with other towns, isn't that correct? But is that only a light of fire?
Um, I don't know what the exact agreement is, but yeah, they respond, um, frequently. West Bridgewater goes to other towns as well, but there's timing, um, there's, we don't know what, how busy the other towns are. I'm not exactly sure what their staffing levels are, if they're adequate or, or not.
Now, look, it's, we, we do, T and T question. However, it's a little bit different between police and fire. Police officer pulls somebody over, uh, they think it's a routine stop, it turns into something not that, you don't have time to call for mutual aid. I mean, you're in the middle of it. On a fire, you know there's a fire, so as soon as you dispatch, you're immediately ringing the bell, even before you get there. Uh, the other thing is, I mean, I just looked it up, this past year, calendar year 2018, we had over 12,000 calls for service, which represents 34 a day. Again, some of those are petty, right?
How many though? I mean, 34 a day is a lot.
34 is a lot. And when you think about it, we don't know when we receive that call. Sometimes it sounds like it's benign, but then you get out there and you realize it's a much worse situation. Sometimes it sounds like it's a worse situation, you go out there and it's not, but you have to respond. Imagine if we made a phone call, if this board heard a complaint from a resident who called, and the police officer said, "You know what? That doesn't sound like it's a real, real important, we're not going out to see you." That would be unacceptable.
And it happens in some cities.
So, 34 a day, just service calls alone, that means how police officers are responding, that doesn't include traffic stops, car accidents, run-of-the-mill other incidences. That's just phone calls every single day coming in that a police officer must respond to.
It looks like, like, as brutal as it is, that save money and everything else, and I don't think he would ask for something like that if he didn't need it.
Okay.
You give up on that?
I give up on that. I give up on that one. Building inspector, David recommended a cut of 20,000. I think it should be cut by 15,000, and the reason I think that is, I think that department needs to be looked at and does need some help. There, um, many of the other departments have three people in them, even the Selectmen's office. We have two, plus David, three, so if one's out, there's still two people there. With the building inspector's office, if, if one is out, I'm sorry, if one is out and Mike White gets a call, there's no one there to service the public. So what I had mentioned to David is maybe including $5,000 in that budget, and look to get an intern in to not only assist, but also look at ways to revamp, re-engineer, improve their processes, maybe bring in some technology, but a fresh set of eyes on what's going on in there. I just don't think it's right for people to come in for a permit and there's no one there. There has to be some solutions, whether it's more technology, put the permits online, and make it more self-service, that you can access it on your own time. You don't need to come up to Town Hall to acquire these documents. Make it more self-explanatory. I've applied for permits, and some of them, it's very difficult to understand what the town wants from you. So...
Yeah.
I think most people in the town can attest to that, trying to figure out what you really need is difficult.
I'd much rather see it put into technology. I don't know exa, I'm assuming it would cost a lot more than five grand, though, to, um, develop a page or templates and all that for permit applications.
Right, the $5,000 I'm recommending for an intern isn't necessarily to develop this, it's to get someone in there and have them do basically a white paper on what would be the best technology. You know, maybe get someone from Bridgewater State comparable to, I think, to what you've hired, had folks come in from Bridgewater State, David?
I have.
Interns, and I'm sure a fresh set of eyes looking at our process and procedures, they may have made some recommendations along the way on how we can do things better. And, um, I think that would be a good idea for that office.
So I think the, the way I see over there, and I've had you many times, Karen, you know, she has to take a day off or something like that, and there's no coverage there. And because you're expecting a lot of the building inspector there, you know, to be there and run the office too. I think either, like, uh, you said there, more technology, or maybe a little bit of help, at least, to be able to service the people that do come in.
I don't know if, so an intern will solve the problem of staffing at some points. I don't know how flexible the schedule would be. But I don't know if I would want an intern doing essentially what a consultant would typically do. I mean, I don't know if they'd have the expertise to go in and evaluate the department and make formal recommendations. If we wanted to go that route, I'd rather spend more money to get something that's of good quality. And I don't think five grand would ever cover a consultant coming in to do that work.
So it would, would even come close to covering a consultant, but I'm not sure we need to go to that level, because, um, it's not a high-volume department. It's not highly complicated. For the average resident, it becomes complicated, but I think the local colleges have some pretty educated students.
And I noticed the, you know, that survey that I'm gonna bring up as soon as the Old Colony Planning Council, this is one of the, there's a lot going on out there as far as the building game right now. And, uh, uh, you know, I can see visually and, and with my conversation with the building inspector. So there's plenty of activity going on out there now. It's, 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 it's not, you know, it's lacked off. It's, uh, I don't know, lately I haven't talked to him. But, uh, well, like Anthony says, I don't think $5,000, uh, is gonna do too much in there, you know? I don't know.
How many hours would that get someone from an intern perspective?
So when I did the intern, it was about 12 hours per week. So what I did was, I, I, like, I always want to support our department, because I do think that we're growing and that we are busy. So what I did was, is that I did some analysis, and I said, "Okay, let's look at the peer community list, who has what currently." These are towns, we can talk about whether there's per capita income or not, but they're all about the same size, they're all about the same population. And all of these other towns, for the most part, are running with one building commissioner, one full-time administrative staff, in some cases, one part-time person. Then what I did was, is that I said, "Okay," and this is a little bit small, but then I looked at building permits, and I said, "Okay, let's see what we're trending." And you'll recall, a couple of years ago, I actually really aggressively tried to hire, or wanted to hire a second part-time, uh, a secretarial person. Because you could see in FY 15, then FY 16, FY 17, the department was vastly growing, and it seemed, you know, we really do need to add somebody. But then as you see in FY 18, it has trended down. In FY 19, we're tracking to only get to $102,000 in building permits, and the average for the preceding five years was 125. When you add up all the permits, we're projected right now to be at 139, and the average for the preceding years was 167. Now, I don't want to put a lot of weight on that for two reasons. One is, is that building is very strange, because you could have nothing going on and have one permit laying on your desk for 4, $4 million, and that skews the numbers immediately. The second is, is that I have no way of knowing from FY 14 through FY 18 whether those numbers were consistent, because usually this is seasonal. So we just came through a winter, not a bad winter, but it was a winter. So normally that slows down, and so I would presume that very often our springtime is much busier than our winter time. So right now, we're projecting at 102 for the building department, 139 for the overall department, but that may very well accelerate as we're in the building season. But at the end of the day, when I was looking at these numbers, I said at $139,000, not vastly different from 14 and 15, and at that point, we didn't win the office with the staffing level that we had. Obviously, I've spoken to Selectmen Rays about this. I understand the value of having an intern, because having somebody there that can at least help to answer the phones, as long as they're properly trained, and, um, our administrative person is maxed out on vacation time, so she gets the highest lo, uh, number of days. That may very well be helpful, just to be able to fill in some of those periods of time. And at the same time, at worst case, provide some type of tracking mechanism, because that person can track how many calls come in, how many people come to the front desk, what days are busier. Because if you recall that during the budget process, you would ask the question to the building inspector. If you had somebody for 16 hours, what hours would they be? And they didn't have an answer. So maybe this intern for, although he had provided professional expertise, maybe they can at least tell us what days were busy.
The other...
Fortunately, that's still variable.
The, the other thing, David, about the intern is most, I mean, no one uses textbooks and paper as much as we do. These, these kids are all using tablets, they're very technologically astute. And even I, standing in the building department one day, a year ago, could see recommendations or suggestions that could have been very easily implemented. I mean, seven copies, and, and I don't know if this is all legal in the, in the public sector, but you have seven copies of plans that all need to be filed.
They're for the planning board, so we don't have to make them, so we don't have to pay to make them.
But, but what I was saying is, put them on a zip drive.
No, but the planning board needs them in their meetings, so...
Right.
So we don't have to pay for the copies, we require that they submit seven copies.
But then they're filing them. Then they need someone to file them in the building department. So it's all this paper filing going on.
So again, I just want to make sure that we have all the facts. The chairman is right, is that it's actually 17 copies, which is a requirement of our bylaw. So it's not a requirement of the building inspector, our actual town bylaw would have to be changed if we want to change that. The reason for that is, is because as you went over the, the contractors yet earlier, is that we took that paper copy, we download it to your tablet, so you can just, you're not seeing paper copies. But every other board out there, ADA committee, zoning board of appeals, they don't use tablets. That's why they're getting paper. So if, if, if we want to convert and have technology, we would have to buy tablets for every single other board member, because they're, they wouldn't have to get paper. The second thing to that, uh, is, um... I lost my train of thought.
Well, I'll fill in while you think.
No, I was thinking about the, um, I was thinking about having to buy tablets and just the expense. Oh, I know. I had looked at the electronic permitting, and it is five figures upfront to be able to do all of your programming, and then it is at least four figures on an annual basis for your software. So you are gonna be talking in expense, but again, maybe that alleviates some of the pressure.
So now going back to the peer communities, is it possible they're already using that technology, and that's why they can function with the minimal staff?
Well, I know one town that's not, but I don't know about the others.
That's, uh, you know, I suspect just that there's room for improvement?
So you're proposing essentially adding back five grand? I don't have, I don't have an issue with that, to hire an intern. I mean, if we can't find the right intern, we just don't hire the person, we save the five grand.
Right. So it would be, the reduction that was recommended was 22,44? I'd be recommending the reduction of 15,244.
Yeah, I could, the only thing is more important to have somebody available there, you know, when people do come in, you know?
I'm sorry, Denise, were you saying, um, 51,12, that line, or a different line?
No, I'm, I'm just, bottom line, budget 24,10, you had recommended 20,244?
Yep.
So just...
Add 5,000.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a question, where do the fees go for the permits? Is that free cash, or is it...
They go back, they go to the general fund, um, so they don't go directly back to the, um, building department. But in theory, and I believe by statute, the building department should cover its expense, and it currently doesn't right now. So we are looking at increasing the fees in order to cover the entire building department expense.
And just add, we wouldn't need to buy them tablets, we could have it projected from a computer onto a screen, so they could all see.
I don't know if engineers would like that.
Everybody get like 10 of them, and have everything on them, and make them, whatever meeting needs. meeting needs, someone can.
Okay.
This is very sexy.
3,000, education. I don't have all my notes with me on the various lines I went down and I even looked at weighted averages as well, but I came, the number I came up with was significantly higher than what David had recommended. But my thought was to at least reduce it by 65,000 dollars and I apologize, I don't have the actual figures I had. But this budget was an increase of 4.6 percent. I would have liked to have seen it more around 4 percent.
I just, I have a hard time with that because I don't know what that means for the school department. I don't know, I don't know what it would mean as far as how they'd react to it, if it would mean a layoff, which I'm guessing in this case of 40,000. I know Patty had told David that she can manage with the $36,000 reduction, but going from 36 to 65 is pretty much almost a teacher. I just, I have a hard time recommending that without knowing what the impacts are.
Same here, like anything that I've done, especially when it comes to the school budget there or any other budget there is, had a conversation and, you know, where is this money, if we're going to cut it there, you know, what's, what's going to be cut, you know, what the problem is. And I also have a hard time with, with something like this, so just arbitrary cuts on without not having all the facts.
Well, and again, I apologize, I had a list of lines I went down and compared, similar to how I did the electricity and the heat the prior year. And I'm glad to see that's been significantly reduced because last year, our last budget, you know, I had brought up, that was really, historically, it was much higher than the historical figures. And I did go through and have some numbers for you, but unfortunately I didn't. Really, the difference between 36,5 and 65,000 in this sized budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is nothing. I mean, I'm sure Patty would be able to go through this and come up with that number very quickly, but.
I mean, I agree that it is a very small percentage of the entire 15 million dollar budget. I just don't know what the exact impacts would be and, I mean, yeah, you're right, it's possible that there really aren't significant impacts, but without knowing, I just have a hard time doing it.
All right, well, we can move past that one. Library, line 60, budget 6100. David had 2,000, I was recommending 4600 and that was based on line 5118, 5112 and 5111.
One more time, what were those?
5111, 5112 and 5118. I can't remember where you said the 2,000 was coming from, David, is it on here?
Yes.
The line?
Currently, I have 2,000 dollars coming from.
Electricity and.
What budget number is that?
So it's.
6100?
6100. I am reducing or recommending that we reduce 5211, electricity by 750 dollars. Excuse me. And the other line is 5510, books and periodicals. They were looking for a 2,500 dollar increase and I was providing a 1,250 dollar increase. So that totaled to 2,000. I would only say that 5111 and 5118, all in 5112 too, because that's a collective bargaining. Those are all, those are all contractual contracts.
So that was a mistake of mine then, looking at those lines. Those were contracted before we even get to town meeting.
Yeah.
I forgot about that.
Yeah, they're already under contract now, I believe.
Okay, scratch that one. And that's all I have.
And the only one thing that's okay that I want to add is that the board of health budget came in, they were looking to increase their stipend. Their current stipend was 2,500 dollars across the board to 7,200. As you know, whether it's been the town clerk or any other elected position, I really try not to weigh in on what elected people make for compensation. I had to balance and I was looking for every dollar that I could find. And so what I did was that in the spirit of cooperation, was that I said, maybe what we do is we meet the board of health's recommendation halfway and we increase it from 2,500 to somewhere around 5,500. And in that way, if next year you want to bring it up to the request of 7,200, it's not as much of a bite. But again, I just wanted to point that out because I really try to stay away from elected officials' compensation. But I was trying to just be fair and equitable, but I want to make sure that everybody was aware.
They on the low side?
They are from a, one of the, from the paid boards, they are the lowest paid board. But you do have elected boards that are not paid and I do presume that since we will have this conversation at town meeting, it will open up a larger conversation about why some boards are paid and why some are not.
What's the explanation for that?
You know, I can only speculate. I think that the board of selectmen has the highest paid board against 10,300, it's 3,000 dollars a person, it's not a lot of money. But you are the highest board in town, there's a lot of work that you do behind the scenes. I mean Denise, we spent hours on Monday together going through this, these budgets and some other issues and obviously Anthony and Eldon, we spent lots of time outside of your work hours and sometimes during your work hours. There's not an issue in town that you don't address or be involved in, so I think it makes sense.
But even the salary was, I don't, I'll let you run for the salary, I mean, you know, but geez, you know, the things that you have there, you know, you have to use your car and you're always moving around there and you do have expenses to be here, you know?
The board of assessors, I think it makes sense for them to be paid on the higher end as well. That board arbitrarily can cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars through the abatement process. You know, if Lowe's comes in and they file an abatement for 350,000 dollars, the board of assessors with no other oversight could they just agree with? And that just costs the taxpayer 350 grand. There's not, there's nothing anybody can do about it and they don't. Our board is extremely, we've only spent 100,000 dollars year to date for all of our abatements, including excise tax. They do a really good job collectively protecting the taxpayer from people coming in because some people just file it every single year to see what could happen. So I think it makes sense to pay them. The board of health, they obviously have a lot of licensing that they do, so I think it makes sense to pay them. The library, again, there's no disrespect to trustees in the library, but for the most part, they probably don't leave the building. I may be wrong on that and if so, I apologize. But my guess is that they, they don't leave the building that much.
Yep.
So I can only speculate as to why some are paid and some are not paid. The water commissioners are paid, but again, they have an entire town that they have to inspect the water lines. So somebody at town meeting years ago probably made that decision. I can understand that, but again, I'm just speculating.
Does the board of health, do they have to go out to properties?
So they have an agent that will go out and do the inspections, but I am sure that there are times, especially the chairman, because he's also a gas and plumbing inspector and has special expertise in this area, I am sure that he is out all the time inspecting properties as well.
But.
Planning board does go out to properties as well who are not paid.
Question?
Follow.
Well, I was just going to say that yes, that the chairman does go out because when there's a fire, a lot of times, and there's been fires in restaurants or different things that have come up, and after hours, he does go out. So it does happen a lot more frequently than people realize.
Yeah, and that makes sense because again, every single license or facility that has restrooms, for example, I mean, they all get licensed, everybody that sells food gets licensed, so that makes sense. You know, but it's going to, again, this is going to become difficult because we talked about elected boards, but the zoning board of appeals probably permits just as much, if not more, than what the planning board does. They're not elected, they're not paid either. And they go out to inspect all of their properties and have, provide a regulatory oversight. So I don't know where this all goes, that's why I wanted to raise it, just so that way it wasn't something new to somebody at a future date. But in a, in a quest to balance the budget, but then also to recognize exactly what the board of health's request was, I tried to find a happy medium, which means I probably didn't, but I made an honest attempt.
I think I could go along with your recommendation. At least make an effort to move the thing up.
Okay.
I would be hesitant in going along with the recommendation only because I think it's unfair. I mean, the.
Unfair which way? Too much or too little?
It's unfair for, for a board that's requesting to be compensated incomparable to other boards, that is putting in amount of effort, I think is unfair. I realize the board of assessors could put us in a position where it could cost the town a great deal of money, but anyone could be negligent, any board could ask, act negligently and get the town involved in a lawsuit that could cost us tens of thousands of dollars. It's happened. So I, I'm willing to go along with David's recommendation because I didn't put a lot of time into thinking about it. I am just saying, it's volunteers, whether it's us or water commissioners or assessors or the board of health, the, the, these residents put in time.
I know, I realize that.
And it's just unfair for some to be paid and others not.
Yeah, I mean, I wish that we could figure out a better methodology to it. I mean, so the planning board doesn't get a stipend, the school committee who oversees almost half the town budget doesn't get a stipend. So I think we should put more methodology to it, maybe for next year. So I'd say we go along with David's recommendation of splitting it this year with the intention of fully funding it the following year and hopefully making all the elected boards more aligned or more appropriately funded.
So what Dad said, if, I just want to make sure I capture all of this, the net result is a 2,000 dollar reduction in one budget, a 5,000 dollar increase in another budget. So the recommended budget in the end is going, your recommended budget to finance committee is going to be 3,000 dollars higher than the amount that I provided. So that means it would be 35, 317, 819.
Yep.
If that's the case, then I would ask you to take that vote.
Okay, is there a motion?
I think I'll vote for that.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, how about common period? Anyone from the public would like to say anything? No takers?
I got something.
Are you sure?
It's really easy, it's not bad. When we were talking about online permitting, somebody still, even though you submit your stuff online, somebody still has to review it and get back to them. It's nothing that's automatic, you don't automatically get issued a permit. Because I use online permitting for the plumbing all the time and it's, all you do is you get an email back saying that they received it. You still have to wait until you get something from that office.
Right, we're not, we're not looking, it's to avoid the resident having to come up here and no one's here. To help them have some more information online that, that assists them. Like you could go online at 11 o'clock at night and fill that out, right?
You can submit it.
Right.
But you can also mail permits as a request in.
Right, so you can do it at, at your convenience. And that's what we're looking for, making it more convenient for the public, get some help in there, look for better ways to do things.
Right, but for that expense, it doesn't sound like it's really worth it. If you're talking, what was it, five figures?
Five figures.
A five, yeah, a five.
It doesn't sound like it's going to be, because people can mail permits in, you have to tip them that way, they can drop them off. And either way, it still has to all go through the same approval process.
Right.
So I mean, you could still have, all the permit information is available on the website. You can download the forms, the permit fees are on there, so.
Are you talking about our website?
It is on our website.
Well, maybe no.
That I think is also part of the plumbing code, that it has to, you have to have all the information available.
I'll be interested in seeing what this person comes up with because like I said, sitting there for 15, 20 minutes with them, there were some ideas that Mike and Karen and I talked about, that was a year ago. It hasn't happened. Hopefully, we can get someone in there, give them a hand with when they're shorthanded and develop some ideas.
Okay.
Let me say something. As you notice over at the YA over here, the press box was damaged and wasn't replaced. And I happen to be talking about it to a friend of mine who's doing a lot of building in this town. And he'd be amenable to meet with the president of the YA and if they choose, I mean, first I looked at the town and I said, you know, with our finances and everything else, and maybe if they're going to ask, you know, is anybody out there that volunteer, if it happened, run into this guy and ask him out finally. He said, yeah, he said, I'd meet and, and just see what we have there. And as you know, you know, over the years, the YA, I mean, we, we've tried to help them as much. As you notice that in the last few years over there, they used to send the children out and they used to have like a fun thing, they don't have that available anymore. You know, and money, money's an issue. I made the club available since I've been the board director of Sam's The Rock and Gun Club. And they, they set up their big meetings over there for the tournaments. And now, a lot of them have joined the club, they're, they're, they're in there making pizzas and they're, they're part of us. So we help them, they help us. So I just want to tell you, I, I've got that out there and I'll be waiting to hear. I did put a call in to the president who didn't get back to me yet and, and we're, we're looking at it and just see and just hope if they still want that press box there, there's a volunteer out there that probably would, would volunteer, you know? Or anybody else would out there that's, that's listening to me tonight would like to be involved in that. Because it's, it, you know, where they operate over there, you know, it's a little shelter for them too. You know, even the sun, the bright sun and the, and it's something that's missing over there this year and I already, I already saw that and I says, geez, it would be nice if they choose to put that back up again, you know? But there's nothing there right now. And David says he saw it when he came down or something, didn't he? So just little things like that, that the board of selectmen is always there, try to help out. And, and they do a tremendous job for the youth of this community, you know? And a little we can do for them, I've always been a, a saint. And when we go over there to the, the opening there, I've been through every single opening since that program has started. And I'm just watching, I'm still here to go over there and hope to be there at their opening day and, and with him well.
I do have a quick question. What's the status of National Grid at East, the center with light?
I, no new change at this point.
So they're not responding to us? Have we sent them any written communication?
The guards on us to it is for the past week have done nothing but.
Okay. I mean, I would, I don't know if this is the proper protocol, but I would like to see a letter sent to National Grid to ask them to move this along.
You're talking about the, the light up there?
All that needs to be moved?
Yeah.
Oh, and I got that other situation with a, with the light up there on Copeland Street, nobody's got back to us. And I kind of left it up to them because of the situation, being the Dutchman Farm across the street. And it seems to be one light is putting the other light out. And so they're trying to figure that one out up there where, and they wanted to put a sub pole and then the, Bob Moran, who was pretty well up there in the National Grid, he's just, whatever West Bridgewater wants there, but then he, he looked at the pole, yeah, they got quite a lot of things on it and, you know, the pole's kind of leaning over too, so they, they do have kind of a problem. But you know, getting on that subject, what, when we meet up at the Old Colony Planning Council and there was an engineer beside me, and you know how much it costs to put those traffic lights up? He says, you have to look at the intersections, if you can do anything to upgrade the intersections, either have better lighting and all that, that's what you look at. And maybe it's, it's a matter of the way you stripe the road off and, and things like that, but you ought to look at that. So I think we ought to fall in that direction because that cost to put those lights are just continuously increasing. And, and like I was saying, we have to look at other methods to, to do this, you know? And of course, that, the biggest problem I have in out there on the committee I'm on there is that they're talking electric cars there, they don't pay taxes and, and they fund the highways with the, with the gasoline tax and that there, so there's some problems down the road here, you know? Thank you.
Should that letter come from our office? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have one last thing, so I won't be able to attend the May 1st meeting, I'll be out of town. We do have placing the, or voting on the warrant articles. So I think David has talked to both of you about. So I think David has talked to both of you about possibly scheduling a different meeting to do that. I don't know if it would be totally in replacement of that meeting, or just an additional meeting.
The problem we have there, if Denise goes one way and I, and I go the other way there, then the article doesn't go on the one, so that's...
No tiebreaker?
And I'd like to have, you know, the three of us there, if it's possible, if we could reschedule a meeting.
Is there any reason we're tied to a Wednesday night meeting? Could it be any other night?
No, I think we can't do Wednesday first, I think there's a conflict on that.
But that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, it can be any...
Why can't we try another night, a Saturday morning? I mean...
Well, I can't do Saturday mornings.
Okay.
So that's...
Then another weeknight?
David, did you have something in mind yet?
I do not. I mean, obviously, this is a priority, the warrant closes on Friday. We are gonna need at least a couple of days to review, because everything will come in, put it into proper form, and make some, you know, just so we can at least have a proper presentation to the board, so...
So would Thursday, April twenty-fifth work, in terms of getting it ready?
I mean, that's what, that's what the board wants, and we have to, they won't make it work.
And does that work? Would that work for, I believe there's a conflict on that Wednesday.
If I have my calendar with me, I think...
I don't really know right now just what to say on that, but, you know, try to be available.
I should be available.
I should too, you know?
I think I, I think I am.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
Can I get back to you on that? I think that was the only day.
Yeah, just let David know.
Would I give you the list of days that I was available? Do you recall if that was one?
Would the following week be too late? Be, so would the week of May sixth be too late to do it?
I think as long as we did it, we'd have to do it preferably that Monday evening.
No, it's a Monday evening, that's, when my affiliation with the club, they want to meet on Mondays, and I said, no, no. This is because, I leave that kind of open for us here, because, you know, I, I know that sometimes having that extra day there...
Do you have another day? That's just so I can check the calendar tonight?
I haven't checked my calendar either, you know?
Yeah, we could, on May sixth, that Monday night should work.
Which finance committee?
I'm sorry?
Which finance committee?
They normally meet on Thursday nights.
So they'd be voting on these articles on the ninth?
Right now, they're scheduled to vote on the second, so I would have to move it as well.
Okay. So ideally, April twenty-fifth would probably be best, if it's doable by the, by us. Okay, but we'll work with David.
Right. Right, so, I'll communicate...
And thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll communicate with each one of you, we'll target the twenty-fifth, and then if that doesn't become possible, then...
Okay.
We'll have a different date.
Okay.
Have a wonderful trip.
Thank you.
Are you, are you both tied to five o'clock on the, I mean, seven o'clock on the twenty-fifth, or if...
I could do five if you wanted to earlier.
Okay.
Where do you want to go?
Maybe if I can check my schedule, see if I have the twenty-fifth available. And maybe try to juggle something around. It depends, if I was off that day, I could come in the morning if you'd like.
I probably can to the morning.
Okay. So let me look, let me check my schedule, see what I have going on.
All right, so we'll all work with David to find a mutual date, and thank you both for making that change. All right, Town Administrators report.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I think on page one, we have some minutes that we...
Oh, we did them already.
You did? Oh, I'm so sorry, okay.
Somebody got out of room.
Anthony was being expeditious.
So, first on the Town Administrators' Report is an update on Daniel Desmond, a former police officer versus the town of West Bridgewater. I am proud to announce that the town prevailed at the appeals court, and the appeals period is now over, which means that the officer has run out of appeals. It has only taken four and a half years. We have won at every single level. Unfortunately, we did spend a hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money defending the position. But, everybody's entitled to appeals. We were entitled to a defense. We did prevail, so I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that. Next one is, is the annual Crush Cancer 5K that I approved on, and per the policy notifying the board. There's a policy in front of you for OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. We currently, everything that we are attempting to memorialize in this policy is exactly what we have been doing now for the handful of years that we've been funding OPEB. We go to town meeting every year since I've been here, and we attempt to place fifty to a hundred thousand dollars into this account. OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, is for retirees that are on the town's health insurance, and now under GASP-75, which is new accounting regulations, must be shown. And the liability is, or what we always shown as a liability, the money that we place into the account is shown as an asset. And over the last couple of years, just by placing a couple of hundred thousand dollars year after year into it, we have increased our bond rating, well, that's one of the reasons we did, to AA plus, which is very good for the size of town that we are. I am meeting with S and P next week, or in ten days, with the treasurer, because we're gonna make an attempt that we can maybe even bring our bond rating up another notch, which would help our debt, our interest rates going forward. However, one thing that our financial advisor is recommending that we do, is that what we are currently doing is to memorialize it into a policy, so we are telling S and P that this is what we actually do do. So with that said, we've just taken what we do on a daily basis, placed it in a policy, and I'm just asking the Board of Selectmen for their approval.
Okay, okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the OPEB policy.
Okay, I'll second motion.
On favor? Kathy?
Thank you. And last thing to my report is very good news. You know, we called that last winter, which is the storm that you were referring to, Selectman Marrero, when the press box came down, was that winter storm. We incurred a lot of overtime expenses at that point. FEMA made grant money available as long as we applied for it. I want to applaud our treasurer, our town accountant, along with all of our department heads that incurred additional expenses. We spent a lot of time putting all that money together, anybody who's done a grant for the federal government knows that you had, it's all about documentation. But in the end, we just got, we were just informed that we're gonna be reimbursed about thirty thousand dollars, out of about seventy-five thousand dollars spent. So, we didn't get every single dollar back, but it's thirty thousand dollars to the benefit of the town, and so we'll be receiving those funds this year.
I have a question. I know when that thing come down there, was that covered on insurance? Not that I want to put that into insurance, because the rate, when you, when you put claims in, the rate keeps on going up the next year, so... I just wonder, would something like that have been covered on insurance? It probably would be worse than... I wouldn't suggest to go that way.
Like, they'd have to check their policy. They could have a ten thousand dollar deductible, I don't know. But for us, most of our expense was incurred through overtime expense, which would not ever be covered through an insurance claim.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, with nothing further on the open session agenda, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to retain, not to return to open session, for purposes of conducting a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations for non-union personnel, specifically the vehicle maintenance superintendent. And we need a roll call vote.
Marrero, yes.
Raise yes.
Anyhow, yes. Thank you.